Ten seconds.
Okay, let's call in meeting to order and let's stand for the pledge.
I would like to.
I would like to testify as the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment. Prayer for our troops. And our men in blue. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a couple of things in front of us tonight. Let's start with the.
That's important.
Let's start with the easy one. The gunk's holding. 1556 Route 52 and 1562 Route 52. Tax parcel number 6256-04594281 and 6256-04604282. This is the general business zoning district. The applicant seeks the following avenue of relief to add an additional fuel dispenser and canopy extension to the existing fuel dispensing area. The front yard setback variance of 1 foot 10 inches with 35 feet is the minimum setback requirement. In the general business zoning district, said variance would result in a 33-foot, 4-inch front yard setback. A rear yard setback variance of 12 feet 7 inches with 30 feet is the minimum setback requirement in the GB zoning district. Said variance would result in an 18-foot, 7-inch rear yard setback. Said request is in violation of fiscal town code, Chapter 150, zoning attachment to Schedule of Regulations on Non-Residential Districts. This is a continuation of the public hearing that we opened on April 18. Thanks, Doc. Should I also read the newsome middle before you start? Let me read that, okay?
Let me just jump in there procedurally, right? So, the hearing is open on the existing application, as you know. The new application was just received. So, you can't really hear them together because you have to notice, the new one has not even been noticed for a public hearing yet. So, although they're related, they are separate. So, I think you have to continue to treat them as such unless the applicant wants to continue. But there's a couple of different ways to proceed, right? You can keep the hearing open if you wish on the first one, and then if you're ready on the second one to, you know, accept that application and schedule it for a hearing and notice it for a hearing. You could have them both travel together at the next meeting, but there's absolutely no requirement that you do that because they're different. It's the same project, but two very different variances, and the applicant, I think, has elected to kind of go this way, move forward with the one and then sign afterwards, right?
It's easier for the board, yeah, you know.
Yeah, it's, they're definitely two separate applications. So, I think probably the best thing to do would be to, you know, work on the public hearing on the existing one now, and the applicant can.
And then.
Yeah, the applicant can.
Extend the public hearing on this one, and so we have the both next one.
You could do both, or you could, if you're ready, if you're ready to close the first one, you can close the first one and vote on the first one, and then vote to accept the second one and put it on for a public hearing next month. That's, you know, all of those are acceptable ways to proceed.
All right. What's your pleasure, sir?
I'll defer to the attorney here, and we'll just treat it in order as presented.
Well, we'll accept the, you know, let's just talk about the first one, and then we'll accept this one, okay?
I don't have to sit down again, so it's easy.
So, you got any further comments concerning the first application?
I don't have any additional comments from what we previously presented. I think it's pretty straightforward what we're looking for. If there's any additional comments from the board, I'd be happy to ask or answer.
Okay. Let's do that.
Hi, thanks. So, I just am, was trying to get, I spend a lot of time at Blue Seal, so I'm able to kind of see that general area. It doesn't look to me like there's much of anything like going on behind the property, so I'm not bothered really by that setback. But the creek is there. Can you, because I didn't want to walk on somebody else's property without, you know, permission, but is there anything kind of blocking that stream from what's going to be? It looks like a kind of a tight, looking at the map, like a tight little curve and corner. But, you know, what is protecting the stream or the creek from some of that activity that's going to be going through?
Right, so there is that railroad that crosses, I guess it's the future rail trail. It has a higher elevation. I'm not sure of the last time that had flooded, but the fire department has put in a retention pond back there to help deal with the flooding issue, so that is now kind of a buffer from our property to the stream addition.
Yeah, there's another property back there, right?
Yeah, it's a decent stretch.
The firehouse property, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Johnny, you got any questions?
No, no, I took a gander over there myself and, you know, setback and with the water issue. You know, there's different points of elevation there, so I don't, you know, see it disturbing anything.
Okay, Anne, you got any further questions?
No, thanks.
Okay, Tim?
No, I'm good.
Doug?
I'm fine with this.
Kath?
I had the same as Anne, but I think I'm good.
All right, the only question I had is the retention pond. That's actually, the firehouse is going to build that, correct?
I believe it's there now, yeah. They demolished the house that was behind where the drive-through is going, so that is now, it's the beginning of their retention pond.
And I presume at this point, the planning board is going to be addressing any runoff from this.
Correct, that was addressed through planning.
Into that, okay.
Correct, yeah.
And since the last meeting, I believe the applicant has received the deck from the planning board, and that was, you know.
Oh, that's correct, yes.
An important event.
Approvals as well.
Oh, and approvals, okay. I assume obviously subject to.
Subject to variances.
To the variances, yeah. So, there's no procedural barrier to you, you know, taking an action tonight if you see fit, or, you know, at whatever point you're ready.
Well, nobody has any further, any further questions. Want to take a vote on this?
So, the hearing's still open. You should see if anybody from the public would like to be heard on this particular application.
Anybody having comments concerning this application?
All right, then I think you're ready to, unless anybody else has any other questions or concerns or wants more information on that one, you should entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. You have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Who have a second? Second. For a favor?
Sorry.
Can I just jump in for one second, just on procedure? Let's be clear, since we now have some alternates on the board, right? So, alternates only, you know, participate and vote on matters if they've been duly appointed for that meeting by the chairman, right? So, and it's at your option. Some boards and some codes will have, you can only appoint an alternate if you need them for a quorum. That's not what your code says. New York State law says you can only appoint a, an alternate if there's a conflict of interest, not by a mere absence, but your code says otherwise. So, if, if you have less than a full board, but, you know, and you would like to have an alternate designated, you need to designate them.
If we have a quorum, do we need to?
You don't need to. It's at your option under the way your code is written. So, if you have a quorum and you're satisfied, you know, you do not need to. There's no requirement that you appoint one of the two alternates to fill that fifth spot, which you can at your election.
I'm satisfied if anybody else wants to jump in.
I do have a question. You had actually said that the alternates are only allowed to participate and vote, so we can't comment? We can't ask questions or?
No, I, you, no, I, you're astute. You picked up that I did say that I probably shouldn't use that word, participate. You can participate, but the voting is the key.
Right, okay, that I understood.
Right. And participating and asking questions to help educate yourself.
Right.
But in terms of deliberations, you shouldn't, if you haven't been designated as an alternate, you know, to sit as a regular member, then you shouldn't participate in the deliberation.
Well, I'm satisfied with the quorum, but if anybody else wants to, you know, add their comments about, you know, adding an alternate, I'm open to that.
That's your call.
At least with this application, I'd rather just pursue, proceed with the vote.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so do we have, so for clarity and the record, I wasn't paying attention to who was voting. So, I know there was a motion to close the public hearing. I believe there was a second. Do we have?
Yeah.
I made a motion.
Okay, so we've got four, four to zero to close the public hearing. Okay, good. So, now you have, at your option, you have 62 days to render a decision. You could render a decision tonight verbally and then direct me to prepare a resolution as you've done in the past, and authorize the chairman to sign. You could talk about it on the record tonight and have me draft a resolution consistent with that for, ready for next meeting. Those are all acceptable ways to go, depending upon what you want to do. But I would encourage you to deliberate and talk about the five factors tonight at the very least.
All right, you want to deliberate tonight?
Yeah, I do.
I do.
So, I could, I could help you.
Deliberate tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could lead you through the factors if you like. I know you'll have the, you know, the sheet in front of you as a reminder, but, you know, as a reminder, it's a balancing test for an area variance. It's balancing the benefit to the applicant against any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the community if the variance is granted. And again, it's not, you're not passing on the judgment, on the project as a whole, it's the variances. And that balancing test is guided by the five factors. The first one is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties by the granting of the area variance. Does anybody feel that there'd be any undesirable change or negative impact?
Well, does anybody, Tim, what do you think?
No, I don't think it's, I think it's going to benefit the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think it's a desirable change.
Yes.
Kath, you too?
Yes.
I agree.
Okay, the second factor is whether there are any feasible alternatives to achieve the safe benefit other than through the grant of an area variance?
Well, this is already, this is already an awning there, that it's already there. So, it's just an extension of what's already there. Is that correct?
Correct, for the canopy.
Okay. So, Tim?
No, I don't think so. I think what they're doing is fine.
Doug, agree? Kath?
I mean, on some level, I question the drive-through, but I think it's a benefit for the area, so I'm fine.
And the applicant, I think, spent, how many, you know, quite a bit tweaking it at the planning board level in terms of different potential layouts, right? As I understand it?
We did, yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't imagine anything other than what you presented, to be honest with you, you know.
It was hard to get the stacking requirements for the drive-through.
Stacking requirements?
Well, for the cars, that's what we call stacking requirements.
Okay, all right.
Trying to get away from backing up onto the road.
It's been beat up pretty good through the planning.
Yeah, they put the fence up and all that other stuff, yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, the third factor is whether the area variances are substantial?
See, this, this is something, at least with the awning, that is a substantial, but it's already exists. So, you know, I think we had some level we have to grandfather it in.
Almost.
That's my thought, you know?
Well, keep in mind, the substantialities of the variances, not of the project or of the existence of it, right? So, on the canopy, if I'm, if I'm looking at it right, required is 35 feet, and they're providing 33 feet 4 inches, right? So, that one's only about a foot, foot, you know, just under a two-foot variance. The other one is the rear yard, that's where the, oh, is that the, I might be using the wrong terminology. Is it that back? Are you referring to that back as the canopy?
No, I was talking about the canopy over the front.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that back is just the, that's the one that's a little bit more.
I was thinking was be closer.
Yeah, it's higher numerically. It's the 30-foot required and 18-foot, 7-inches provided, you know? And substantiality is, like, all these factors, as you know, you know, no, no one in particular is determinative. And substantiality is, you know, there's a, there's a variety of things, a variety of factors that come into play when you're talking about what's substantial. Sometimes you can look at it just purely on the numbers. Sometimes the substantiality can be mitigated by other factors, so.
Well, there's two, there's two variances here, and I'm always focusing on the first one. The second one, the rear yard, in my opinion, and I'm just, my opinion, you know, there's nobody else back there. So, there's nobody else here, you're not encroaching on anybody, so, you know.
I agree with that.
Doug, Kath?
I agree with you.
No, I'm good with it.
Okay.
So, the front, you feel, nobody feels is substantial. The rear, it may be substantial, but because there's mitigating factors that make that not.
Exactly.
Determinative.
Right.
Okay. The fourth is whether there's be an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district by the granting of the variance.
Tim?
No, not at all.
Doug?
Nope.
Kath?
I agree.
And last is whether the difficulty was self-created, and when it's an area variance that is not determinative, as you know, in a use variance, if you find to be self-created, that's the end of it. That's the death knell to an application, but not so for an area variance. Self-created is usually a scenario where if you, you know, if you knew or should have known when you acquired the property about the zoning restrictions that were in place that prohibited you from doing what you're doing, and you're sort of voluntarily looking to develop your property, usually that would be considered under the law to be self-created with, you know, with mitigating factors that, you know, may not make it determinative.
May I ask, am I allowed to jump in and ask a question to clarify? So, you had said with an area variance, it's generally not self-created?
No, I didn't mean it that way. If I said that way, I misspoke.
I may have misheard it.
Yeah, if it's a use variance.
Right.
If it's self-created, then that's the end of the story. The board is prohibited by law from granting it. With an area variance, it can be self-created, and you can still grant it.
Okay, okay.
Well, I think it is self-created, but.
It is, right. It's going to always.
I think, I think it's minimal, but it's acceptable, and I think it's necessary.
I think, yeah, as far as the application, I think it's acceptable myself, so.
Okay, so it sounds to me that the factors are all lining up in favor of a grant, and so you could enter, does anybody have any conditions they'd like to, you know, particular conditions, anything like screening or anything extra that, I didn't really hear much by way of anything like that?
I know you've been, the planning board, you've been working very closely with the planning board on this.
Correct.
So, I'm going to leave it up to their discretion as to guide you through this as far as, you know, that's just, again, that's my opinion. Tim, you got anything else?
No, I think we're in good shape.
Doug?
No more?
Kath?
No.
I think we're ready to take a vote here.
Okay, so the usual, the usual conditions that I would put in these resolutions for in a situation like this would be subject to, you know, compliance with the planning board approvals, compliance with all their applicable laws, rules, regulations, compliance with the plans, you know, submitted. So, those would be the usual and customary. So, if you want to entertain a motion to grant the variances on those conditions, and then direct me to prepare a resolution consistent with that and authorize the chairman to sign, that would be a fair motion.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
For that?
With the.
Whatever he said.
Yeah, exactly. One of the faces I could put in there.
And do I have a second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. First. All right, we are here to entertain the second application for this property. And I'll read the second application. David?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant seeks the following avenue of relief for the construction of a double-sided monument sign. An area variance of three feet tall where six feet is the maximum allowed general business zoning district, and an area variance of 68 square feet, 34 square feet per side where 40 feet is the maximum allowed for the GB zoning district. Said variance would result in a nine-foot-tall, 180-square-foot monument sign. That's both sides. Said request in violation of fiscal town code, Chapter 150-43, signs, G2, permanent signs within other districts. The board will consider accepting and referring this application, scheduling a publication for a future zoning board of appeals meeting. The applicant number, ZB23003, property address, 160 Old Lanham Road and 7, oh, wait. This is.
I think this is ZB23-004.
Yeah. It is.
I only have three. ZB23004. All right, the applicant, so I don't have that.
It went from the first page to the second page, but you kept going until the next one.
Yeah, you were, you were done at that.
You were also done, you read the whole.
You wrote, that's what, okay, I see. That's what happened.
You might be finished. You're done.
You forgot to put the brakes on.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, ZB23004, 1556 Route 52, tax parcel 6256-04-59428 in the general business zoning district. And I already read what you're trying to do here, so. Should we accept this application?
So, what I would recommend you do, this is the first time on, maybe just have the applicant give a short statement as to what the applicant's application's about.
And that's before we accept it?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, sure.
You ran, ran through the numbers there, so avoid the math. The reasoning for the size of the sign, there's a few reasons. One is that we're required by New York State to post the sign, the pricing for the fuel on a sign, so that takes up a decent amount of the signs itself. We're also representing three separate businesses on site, so we'd like to reflect that, which is the reason why we have the dimensions the way we do. The price signs are, if you are familiar with the area, they're the same size that exist today on site, so that, just to give a visual of what the size of the pricing would be. With the addition of the drive-through tenant, we reserve space on that sign as well. So, we're trying to keep the same dimensions of the signs that exist now, but with the addition of the other businesses, that has increased. We also feel that the base on the monument sign, which takes up a good portion of the variance, is required during the wear time and especially during the summers if we have gardens around the base that help elevate the sign above the ground so that it's not covered by plants or snow. That's the reasoning why we have the sign as we presented today.
What are the three businesses? It's obviously Chestnut.
Chestnut Market. We sell the fuel brands, you know, we have it on mobile. It might be Sunoco, but that, you know, the size won't change. And then the future tenant. We don't have any contracts for tenants yet because we're not, I guess, marketable to any tenants without approval, so we just have a generic sign on there. So, we don't know who that's going to be, but we just reserve sign, signage for them for the future.
Is this consistent with the signs of the other, along there? There's another gas station there, there's a firehouse there.
Right.
It seems like it's going to be bigger.
Some of them are ladders.
Bigger than the firehouse.
That's, that's my question, is it going to be bigger?
It is, the, the size is going to be larger than what the fire department has.
I don't remember how big the firehouse is.
Is it going to be lit? Like, I'm, I'm looking at that, you know, I know, I was there today, actually, and I went and I looked at the Blue Seal sign, and I looked at some of the other signs along the, along the way. So, right now, the sign is, you know, I mean, I'm not a really tall person, so it felt like it was really up high. That tall sign is not going to be there. The one with the Sunoco sign, that's not going to be there.
Correct.
Is it in the same exact spot?
No, this will be further west on the property and set back further from the property line.
Okay. So, is this going to be, I don't know, forgive me because I don't know the terminology, but is it going to be lit from within the sign, or is it going to be lit going?
We prefer internally illuminated signs, so that does, it'll just create a soft glow.
Right.
The only price IDs, I believe, are going to be LED, but everything else, we're going to propose internally illuminated.
So, just in my feel for going up and down the road, and it's a 45 mile an hour, you know, speed limit, so I didn't feel that, like, the other signs that are six feet, which is the zone, the zoning variance or requirements, I didn't feel like I was missing anything when I was going past, like, there's another station up the road. So, in looking at this, I mean, it's another 50% bigger than the sign that, you know, that is legally allowed in that area. To me, it's, it's a very busy pathway, but if you go, and I do travel there later in the night, it's kind of a nice mellow road. And, you know, I have to say, for me, I would be a little bit, you know, in the back of my mind, I'm wondering, okay, is every other business along this road going to be asking for now a nine-foot? You know, and I see that you have a very nice stone wall to kind of elevate that, and I understand why you would do that, because of snow and plantings and all of that, but so, and you've explained to us, you know, why, your, your thinking behind that. But, like, what would you feel you would be losing if you didn't get a six-foot sign in there? Like, I'm a businessperson too, so I understand, like, you want to promote, you're renting these places, you want businesses to know that you care about them and that you're highlighting them, but, like, would you really be losing with a six-foot sign as opposed to a nine-foot sign?
We could look into that. I didn't, you know, I apologize, I didn't look into the code too much before I came here, but I don't know what the board's or the zoning code is on monument signs versus what exists now is the freestanding, like, the pole sign. Some towns have preference, I don't know if you guys have preference for anything like that.
I'm not sure what the preference would be, but I just, these are my own observations from traveling that, you know, 52, and I, and I travel that a lot, as I said, I spend a lot of time at Blue Seal, so, you know, there's all different kind of, you know, variations of a sign, and it is, you know, it's a busy traveled road, but this, as far as the signs go, I just, like, this would set a whole new precedent, I feel, for signs on that road. Like, that's a serious sign.
I guess the question I have is, how come you need it so big?
Well, in being at the site, I noticed that it is a busy road. I know at different times of day, I'm there during working, working hours, and it gets pretty hectic in that area, so my, my reasoning is that anybody traveling up and down that road is, is going to be focused on the road.
Right.
You know, if we have a sign that's appropriately sized for the speed of the cars going in that area, you know, I came, I started off the design with the basic size of the price ID, just for a reference, and then used the rest of that as it fit on the board to come up with what we have here today. But I could take another look at it, you know, maybe some life-size models might help.
Is there a requirement from New York State as far as the size of the numbers for the pri, I'm sure there must be some kind of regulation.
I think it's kind of, I could look into it again, but I think it's, the requirement is only that it needs, I think the way it's worded is, approaching motorists and boaters have to be able to see what the price of the sign is, so.
And not rubberneck and look and try and see as they're passing.
Right, right.
If I could ask you, at the planning board, was the design of this sign a topic? Did you get into this with the planning board? Lighting, size, location, et cetera?
No, only the fire department had comments about visibility, but we're working that out because we're going through DOT approval right now, and that sign, the sign is part of that as well, and the traffic.
So, what, if you're still going through the traffic, what remains to be done at the planning board, or are you completely done?
Nothing. So, their conditions were ZBA for the front and rear yard setbacks in the sign and the DOT approval and the county health department approval.
The approval. So, so did the, like, the planning board was aware that you were going to have a sign, but they had no idea what the sign was going to look like, how big it was?
Well, this is the set that was submitted to the planning board, so it was on their set as well. They were concerned about the setback. They, I think they asked if it was going to be setback 15 feet.
They were primarily concerned with the setback of the sign.
Right. But then they, you know, the zoning board takes care of it. That's how it was there. Condition of approval is that we would have to go in for those.
Have you, have you looked at anything, any way that you can reduce this down a little bit, you know, to?
I mean, I could scale it and shrink it. Yeah, I think, you know, with a sign of this size on paper, it's hard to visualize, so maybe putting up a...
I mean, I noticed the base is like two foot six. I mean, if you could even maybe bring that down to one foot six, maybe something like that.
Right. You know, I don't know, again, the difference between the monument sign and like a pole sign, you know, you could elevate it off the ground a little bit. So, we're, you know, we have bad experience with signs so close to the ground. They get dirty, plants block the view, snow blocks the view.
They're harder to see, in my opinion, as you're driving along, like, something that's lower to the ground.
Right.
Although, when you're sitting in your car, you know, it's kind of nice to have it.
But I've seen these kinds of signs out in other, you know, gas stations and in other towns, and I, are they nine feet tall? They have to, you know, I mean, that's, that's a big sign.
It depends, and we have, it depends on the jurisdiction, so we do have signs that are, I mean, the existing sign now on site is almost 15 feet tall, so it's, you know, it's a big sign, and it's there existing.
If I can specify that, though, how tall is the poles? So, you're including the whole sign, so when you say 15 feet, but what is, like, the actual, I don't know how to terminology, you know, the terminology for it, but like, the actual sign part of it, not the, you know, the monument? To me, I mean, it's a nice monumental monument. Like, that's, that's nice, I like stonework. To me, it's more visually kind of jarring when it's like a bright, big, you know, mobile, that kind of thing. So, so this, the current Sunoco one, to me, and again, I'm looking up at the sign, is, is like, what, six foot high, and how wide would you say?
I think I had those measurements, and I think it's five feet wide.
Okay.
And then there is, yeah, to the sign itself.
Yeah, including the Sunoco and stuff, yeah.
Right.
Then the poles, the poles don't count in the square footage, obviously, so.
Right.
Would that, would that be something you might want to consider as maybe changing this to a pole sign? And get rid of that two-foot-six by nine-foot base, which is quite a bit of square footage, probably almost 20 square feet, which you could eliminate.
Right.
Just an idea, you know. I know this is nice-looking, you know, it's attractive and everything.
Right.
It is, but the site, I mean, in my opinion, like, the site, like, it's, it's a, you know, again, it's kind of like a little bit more mellow than Route 9 or like some of the other more heavily traveled or, you know, this is a single, is a single lane kind of road where it's not like four lanes over and you're trying to see the signs.
Right.
So, I mean, that's just my...
So, it sounds to me, just procedurally, in terms of where we are, the board's had, you know, a lot of comments so far. Obviously, the public hearing isn't open. We haven't noticed it or accepted the application. Sounds to me, I'm kind of making a list of the things that I'm hearing, sounds like there's a lot of feedback to, for the applicant to consider either reducing the size or considering a different design to reduce the bulk.
I would prefer this, let you see that, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I'm concerned about how it's just going to compete with a firehouse sign that we had to make a variance for, and that's serving a community notification and such, so. That's, that's my concern, but...
So, that's some feedback that the applicant has. Sounds to me like the, the board has also asked questions about lighting. I think it's common maybe to ask for some sort of lighting plan, some details for the lighting, right? I think we heard the applicant offer maybe a rendering or simulation or, or maybe you said maybe some examples of the size?
Right, I mean, I could do a photo rendering of what it would look like on the site, so.
Yeah, and I think also, one way or the other, you should refer this out, you know, for the GML reviews. You might consider referring it back to the planning board for, you know, some, you know, you know, review of the sign in particular. It might be that you wait till the applicant comes back with, they have some additional, you know, new ideas, but you could send it out to them for review. State DOT certainly is probably undergoing review now, is that what you said?
They are, yes. We have a traffic study anyway.
Okay.
It's part of that, really.
And will that include the review of the signage as well, or is it just the straight?
They're reviewing everything.
All of it?
The curb cuts, the traffic patterns.
Okay. I think it would be wise to still send the variance application to them as well.
I have just another question, if I can, or not, not so much a question, but just, you had, you had made the comment that you prefer the internal lighting, and I just, I, I would assume that that's because it's easier to maintain or it's safer, you're not having the lights either on the ground that could get hit or up in the air that could be damaged by weather.
We do also have that. Depending on the town, some towns won't let us do internally illuminated, so we do have empty bars that wash the outside.
Right, right. I mean, because, you know, again, it's like the LEDs, I mean, they look really sharp and bright and you can't miss them, but also in this particular location, it's, you know, kind of a more mellow location, I think, so. I just wanted to clarify that. I assumed that that was, it was more easier to maintain if it's inside.
The companies we work with too, that manufacture the signs, they can put that all together for us in a package instead of, the exterior lights are a separate contract.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right.
The price of the gasoline, does that have to be a certain height? Is there a height requirement?
I don't believe so, it just needs to be posted.
Just has to be, you have to be able to see it from the road, and so a driver, somebody driving by has to see, be able to read it, see how much the gas costs and so forth.
Is there an industry standard for those? I mean, it seems, it seems like you see a lot of them around.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually all about the same size.
Correct.
Is this pretty much industry standard, the size you have here?
These are, yes, so, I mean, depending on the sign manufacturer, but for every station that we have, depending on, again, the sign requirements of every jurisdiction that we have, it's...
And the names of the businesses are going to be posted and other signages on the actual...
Correct, so we do have, oh, the canopy will be branded as well, and then the, the building itself will have the Chestnut signage on it, but that's set further back from those, we like to have that up.
Totally agree.
So, it sounds like the applicant is amenable to come in with the materials, like, these extra materials and maybe changing the design of the sign and downsizing it a little bit, and based upon the feedback you're getting from the board, I think what, my best recommendation to you, and you can take it for what it's worth, is to see if the applicant can make those submittals in short order, come back with a new submittal so you know what you're really dealing with, with, after he's heard these, the feedback that he has today, and then hopefully be in a spot to, you know, maybe have a slightly different variance application, instead of nine feet, maybe it'll be a little bit smaller, and then we vote to accept the application at that time, notice it for a public hearing on that plan, and then refer those revised plans out to all the different places where, you know, you might, well, that you have to by law, that you might need to hear, you might like to hear some feedback from.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, I prefer that. You could do that.
Sound like a plan for you?
If that's going to streamline everything, I think that might end up be the best way to do it.
Okay.
Now, I'm just, I'm trying to recall what all of them look like over there and trying to imagine what the firehouse sign is going to look like, but just, I would like to see it all around the same height, you know, comparable to, you know, one another. So, you know, I understand you want people to come to your place, you know, but I think it would just, you know, fairness, everybody should have the same, you know, sign that's comparable.
There's a lot of bi-color, I mean, that's the thing, like, there's no getting around, this, this sign is going to be different. There's a lot of bi-color signs, you know, Ocean State is like orange and white, and then, you know, I mean, right now, the Sunoco, though, is multi-colored and stuff. That's not anything commentary on the sign, I'm just saying, it is definitely going to be different. I don't think that there's any, you know, way around that observation, but...
Yeah, you could just try to get it down a little, a little bit more closer to the, you know, the firehouse sign. Everybody's kind of going that way, but it's, it's right next door, so it's something to look at, or will be next door, certainly now. Okay, so you could, doesn't really take a motion, but it'll just appear on the next agenda, and assuming that the applicant makes the submittals in time.
Yep, do it. What's the next deadline, Debbie?
June 27th or July 18th? So, that would require you amend the application if you're going to reduce the size of the signage.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
Right, no motion, I guess that's it?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, now to the next application. Okay, ZB 23003. Property address 160 Glen Road and 794 Route 52. Tax parcel number 615601250565. And 615601227583. Zoning districts are 20 and general business. Applicant seeks to appeal the determination issued on March 20th by the Town Building Inspector concerning Town Code Chapter 150, Zoning Section 150-95. Approval required. That DKH's, the property owner's, construction of a retaining wall did not need to conform to the building specifications, terms, and conditions of the amended site development plan. Approval adopted by the planning board because the retaining wall's failure to conform to the approved amended site development plan constituted a field change. The board will consider accepting and referring this application and scheduling a public hearing for a future zoning reports, zoning board of appeals meeting. Okay, sir?
Good evening.
You got the floor?
Thank you. I'm Stephen Gabba. I'm the town attorney. This is a bit of an unusual application. The town board is appealing, building inspectors, as you said, determination that construction on property owned by DKH Realty LLC, that's the Healy Hyundai property, did not need to conform to the approved site plan, particularly in regard to the height of a retaining wall, because the building inspector decided it constituted a field change. Now, this application, as I said, is a little unusual, but it's still procedurally proper. Under your code, 150-79, appeals by any board or officer or department of the town are specifically authorized to the ZBA in regard to building inspector determinations regarding the zoning code. Now, site plan approval is particularly a province of the zoning code, so in this instance, I would suggest that the appeal by the town board, although, like I say, it's a little out of the ordinary, is nevertheless proper. Substantively, the property is, you indicated, is located on 794 Route 52. It's being redeveloped. It's going to be a car dealership. And in regard to the car dealership, the property owner applied for site plan approval, one aspect of which was a large retaining wall, which you can see up on the screen there, it's marked out in red. On the plans, it was indicated to be 10 feet high and to run 565 feet in length. The planning board approved the plans for the subdivision, excuse me, the site plan, and in its approval resolution specifically imposed a condition saying that no construction on the site, including walls, they use that word, will be allowed except in conformance with the plans. More important, for this board, there's a provision in Town Code 150-95, which, although perhaps not worded as clearly as you might like, provides that if site plan approval is required, then construction must be in accordance with the site plan. No building permit can issue, no CO can issue, and there's a general provision, no construction of structures will be allowed unless in conformance with the provisions of this chapter, which of course is site plan approval. So, what happened here was, as I said, the plan was approved, and then Healy Brothers, DKH Realty, went out and started construction on the site, and instead of building the wall 10 feet high, they built 313 feet of it, 15 feet high. And there's a provision in your code regarding giving notice of nonconformities with both site plan and building permits, and so they told the building inspector that they built it not in accordance with their site plan. The building inspector then issued a notice of violation, specifically saying, you're violating your site plan. They then brought amended plans to the building inspector, and the building inspector decided that it was okay, that the retaining wall was five feet taller, double really the height of what it was supposed to be, that was 313 feet, because, he said, it constitutes a field change. Well, the town board disagrees with this determination, it feels that the code's very clear, the site plan provides for a 10-foot-high wall, you have to go back to the planning board to get an amended site plan, build 15-foot-tall wall. And therefore, they authorized by resolution this appeal to the ZBA seeking determination of the building inspector's decision that no further review of the plan by the planning board was required, was made in here, and that's what we're here for.
Well, I got a lot of questions, and I think everybody does.
That's what I'm here for.
But I would prefer if we hold our questions until after the public hearing. But I, one question I do want to ask, is where's that piece of paper? Yes. Mail this letter serves to advise the zoning board that DKH Realty LLC is intending to file an amended site plan application with the planning board. Okay, when do you plan on doing that?
I beg your pardon, I'm not DKH.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's, that's what we need to understand, is when they plan to do that?
Let me say this about that.
I'm sorry?
Allow me, please, to say this about that. I spoke with counsel for DKH Healy Brothers this morning, Marcia Chokowicz, and Marcia told me that DKH Healy Brothers has some other issues with the site. There are going to be other changes besides the wall, and they will be filing, she doesn't know exactly when, but, you know, within the foreseeable future, an application for amended site plan approval. And we discussed the possibility of having the retaining wall be a feature in that amended site plan application that would be submitted for review and approval by the planning board. And if that happens, I believe, and I have to talk to the town board, but I believe the town board would be willing to, if not hold this in abeyance, then maybe even withdraw this appeal, because the point of it is to have this wall brought back before the planning board for review. Marcia could not commit to that. She said she talked with her clients, and that it's a possibility, something they would consider, it certainly would be easier for them than pursuing, you know, proceeding both in the zoning board and the planning board, but she didn't have approval for that yet. And if you read this letter closely, you're going to see that that's pretty much exactly what it says, that the plan will reflect conditions, resultant of conditions, and work in the field. Well, that's a reference to, I'm sure, the retaining wall, but the mere fact that they put it on the plan and submitted to the planning board doesn't mean that they're submitting it to the planning board for review. They could put it on the plan and show up before the planning board and say, this has already been approved by the building inspector, you have no review power already. It's shown on there as a feature of the property, but you're here to review just these other items, not the retaining wall. Until we have some assurance, the retaining wall will be submitted to the planning board for full review, this appeal is not moot, we should go forward. Now, what I'm, what I suggest that we do, if the board's willing to entertain this application, is put off the public hearing until, I think August is fair. I mean, if we are reaching agreement and we need more time, we can get back to the zoning board and say, you know, either open it and then just adjourn it again, or maybe just reschedule it. I think July, you know, would be a little precipitous, since this may very well resolve itself. But again, it may not. So, what we would suggest is, if you're willing to entertain it, schedule the public hearing for August, and we'll see where things go.
Well, I think they're taking a chance. If they ask us to review it and we reject it, then they have to go to the planning board, right?
It's true. There's no guarantee of rejection.
I'm not sure why would they take that chance, to be honest with you. I'm just, you know, I'm not a gambling man, but, you know.
Personally, I kind of like your idea.
I...
Push it off to August. Give them a chance to do what they have to do.
Yes.
I think we need to give them the opportunity to get this on the right course, to be honest with you.
Yeah, they're sending you the smoke signals that they're going to do what you think they're going to do, but they haven't done it.
I'm hoping it's not just smoke.
Well, right. Us too.
Can we ask a question? Can we, I know you wanted to hold off on questions, so I can ask a question? I guess I'm, again, I drive 52 a lot, and, you know, this is like the Taj Mahal wall. I mean, this is huge and dangerous. 15, like, I, you know, I was observing this. My question is, they had a plan, and it was approved, and then, like, where along the line does it suddenly become, wow, this 10-foot wall is an issue, we need 15 feet? You know, that to me is a little bit alarming, because, and I don't know if this is the right place, you know, place to ask this.
I would like to, I would like to put those kinds of questions off until...
Yeah, you want, you want to get into those substantive questions only once the, the hearing is open and the, and the DKH is here, and they can respond to those things, and that way, in fairness, it's all on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Legitimate questions at the right time.
David, if we wanted, we were implying to push this off to August, how would we go about doing it?
You could do it one of two ways, right? You could, you could just not act tonight and say, look, let's put it on the agenda for July and see where we are, have Mr. Gabba come back and come in and just have it on the agenda, and then at that time, see what progress has been made. the agenda, and then at that time, see what progress has been made, and maybe at that time, vote to set it for a public hearing in August.
He was suggesting--
Or, right? But again, but the, what is, don't do anything tonight, just put it over till July, have it on the agenda for July, and see where you are, and then set it for a hearing in August, or see, you know, maybe there's some other development that we haven't foreseen. Or you could vote to put it on for a public hearing in August now, and that way, but then it'll be noticed for August, and it's, August is it.
I think that's premature, trying to put a public hearing out there right now.
Yeah, I agree.
Maybe to put this thing off for another month, give them a chance to do the right thing that they have to do.
But the project is proceeding.
The wall's already built.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but the building, the project, the wall, everything is just moving ahead, correct?
Yeah, it's certainly, under the circumstances, it's not gonna get a CO if they have all these other problems.
Gotcha.
Right? They're already, they're announcing that they have problems, and they need to come back and get an amended site plan approval, but there is some level of urgency, you know, to your point, you know? We don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know if they end up filing anything at all, and I think Mr. Gabba is saying, look, let's, let's set it for a hearing now in August, and that will help, you know, like we've, like, we're in court. Nothing like a judge setting the trial date that'd get the parties moving.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if you keep adjourning it, people have a funny way of putting off the decisions that they would otherwise make. So, there's some, there's something to be said for both approaches.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, July, 'cause it kinda keeps the heat on them, you know, to get that to file with the planning board.
So would scheduling a public hearing for August now.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, both, both are acceptable ways to go. You know, setting the hearing, you know, sets a deadline and says, like, you're gonna get moving, or this is gonna be heard by the zoning board on August whatever, you know, or, you know, you can wait 30 days and do that in July.
That gives them time to do the right thing, and then we'll see if they do the right thing.
I understand.
Gives them plenty of time to do.
My argument's probably better than I could.
Yeah.
I mean, if you really wanna resolve this, and the town board wants to resolve this, I think the best course to get where we wanna go as quickly as possible is to set a public hearing on this. But again, not for July, give them the chance to, and we can always, you know, write in and say, you know, please take it off the agenda, or open it and adjourn it, you know, whatever, or whatever, maybe even withdraw the application if they're gonna submit, but if they don't, I mean, I don't want to come back in July, I don't want to do what they want. I don't want to come back in July, and maybe they are, maybe they aren't, we don't know if they are or if they're not this September.
Yeah, I mean, like, scheduling it for a hearing, it gives you a lot of options at that point. If, you know, again, you could open the hearing, it could be ready, and ready for you to have, hear the proof, and close the hearing, and then decide it, or it might be that things are moving along. You, we don't have to renotice it, you can open the hearing and then keep the public hearing open.
All right, the question I--
There's all sorts of options at that point.
If we schedule a hearing in August, we could suggest it, and they have not yet filed with the planning board an amended that includes this wall, you know, that would, that sends a signal to us, you know, 'cause they got, they got two months to file this.
Yeah, I mean, look, signals, any signals would be to, to the town board and the applicant here. For you, it's just, like, for this board, you, you keep focused on the task at hand, right?
Right.
That's it. You, you have an application before you, yes, it's unusual, you have an applicant that's looking for relief, and, you know, I think it would be reasonable to give a little bit of time, as the applicant has stated, for the, for, you know, the situation to resolve itself, but by setting it for a public hearing, you know, about 60 days from now, it gives time for that to happen, but it says, look, if something, something hasn't changed by the August hearing, to make it moot or otherwise, you just have a hearing, and you hear what everybody, hear what the public has to say, hear what the applicant has to say, and I'll give you legal advice on it, and, you know, let it go wherever it's gonna go.
Okay.
You know, follow the proof, and follow whatever the procedure is, it's gonna reveal itself.
I know the town board wants to get moving on this, but I think we ought to wait till August, have a hearing, a public hearing in August.
I agree.
I agree.
All in favor?
All right, so you could, you should enterate a motion to accept the application, schedule for a public hearing on August--
Public hearing in August.
15th.
August 15th?
And that actually will fall before the planning board meeting, because we moved our meeting to August 17th, just so you're aware.
Okay. Okay?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right. We've got one more here.
What else we got?
We've got one more. Cube Smart. Oh, this is the one next to the gas station.
This is the one with Cube Smart.
Cube Smart.
Oh, yeah.
The notice of intent.
52.
Town Planning Board, they intend to be, the secret notice of intent to serve as lead agency. And is that just, is this just an awareness on our board, or?
Well, they're looking to be lead agency, so they circulate it to you for your comments.
I had questions with that, but I'm not sure whether--
I think, right, right now, it's, it's, I don't think they're looking for your comments on any substance of it, they're just asking you, are you gonna consent to them being lead agency?
I got a problem with that.
Would you like to intercede and jump in and become lead agency?
I got no problem with that.
I think without a pending application before you, I think it would probably--
I don't have any to answer.
Yeah, so, I think, you know--
Do we have to make a motion on that?
It would, yeah, you could, the motion would be, if everybody is okay, it would be a motion to--
Motion to let the planning board--
To consent to the planning board serving as lead agency and authorizing--
I make that motion right now.
And authorizing Debbie to advise them of saying--
All right, so Doug made the motion.
Motion.
Who accepted? Who seconded?
I seconded.
Kathy seconded? I'm okay with that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I think that's, I think that's it for tonight.
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.